Council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in person. At the main auditorium is South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to city clerk. If anywhere received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are giving your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m. An archive for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov. And we will now proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Lowe, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Florentino Cordova of the Diamond Bar United Church of Christ.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please face the flag, hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and about indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bring you this prayer this morning or this evening from one of my good online friends, Richard Orloff. Dear God, when it's time to hold the meeting, help us to give fear place at the table. When fear feels estranged from your gatherings, it only works harder to be let in. When it's time to hold the meeting, help us to give grief a place at the table. Grief is only passing through; it has healing powers like no other. When it's time to hold a meeting, help us to give anger a place at the table. Let it shout out. As it loses its voice, it only can give up and listen. When it's time to hold the meeting, help us to give joy a place at the table. Do not ask it to justify its presence; it will only quickly run away. When it's time to hold the meeting, help us to give ego a place at the table, but for God's sake, do not hand it the gavel. Treat it with respect; it's only a warrior for your wounds. And whatever you do, when it's time to hold the meeting, make sure you keep one seat empty. A stranger may appear, bringing gifts of wisdom, mercy, and grace. Only then will the meeting be ready to begin. Amen.
Please be seated. Thank you, Councilmember Lowe, and thank you, Reverend Cordova. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Liu?
Here.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. The agenda is hereby approved. We'll move on to City Manager Report and recommendations. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
I just want to mention that the city council held a study session prior to this meeting and provided direction on proposed improvements for the Heritage Park community building and playground design concepts.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And we'll move on to next on public comment. Public comment is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda, that are within the subject manager's jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted speaker cards first, and then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I have received two public speaker cards, and the first one is from Ms. Shelley Gentry. Ms. Shelley Gentry, floor is yours.
At this point, I don't even know if I need a proper introduction anymore. I think I've been here so many times. I'm calling because I wanted to get an update about what's happening with the Royal Vista Golf Course. I don't know if anybody here knows, but they're going to be closing on March 1st. Seems like it's kind of a weird coincidence that the Diamond Bar one is supposed to open about that same time, but call me skeptical. We have not been given any information about how they're going to close this golf course. Are things going to be fenced off? Are they going to put gates up? How is this going to happen? Because unless this property is secured, it's a safety risk to everybody, especially those whose house is back to the golf course. On February 3rd, there was a county meeting, and the county gave no kind of answers to anything. All they did was deflect. Oh, call this department. Call that department. Speak to this person. Speak to that person. They answered not a single question about what is going to happen. I still have a fence that is only three feet above the golf course, which is a little higher than me. So my fence is probably a five-foot fence, two feet my property, three feet on their property. I've never had a problem. I've lived here 23 years. But if that golf course is no longer going to be secured, I need fencing. And it's not my fault. This is their decision, and they should be liable. Good neighbors, let neighbors know how they're going to secure property when they're leaving. I would never do this to my neighbor. And cities have rules in place that hold neighbors who don't do those kind of things accountable. I can get a fine if I leave my trash cans out, or I do other things that are code violations. These people also should be held responsible, and I know that this is county land, and it has nothing to do with Diamond Bar. But as a resident of Diamond Bar, I'm begging you guys to reach out and find out what Diamond Bar residents are supposed to do about this. I got an estimate for a new fence. That's like $20,000. I'm going to need a new back door. My back door has glass on the top, like every other back door in the city. Now I'm going to have to get one because I have to get that glass out, because that could be a safety risk. I'm going to have to get cameras. I never needed any of this when I lived behind the golf course. It could be $30,000 worth improvements that I'm going to have to put on my property because of what they're doing. And all you can get from them is saying, "Well, it's no different than the golf course." It is, and here's how. When people go to golf there, they have to leave their driver's license to rent a car. There's marshals on the golf course that are coming and going and making sure people are not causing problems for anybody. And if there is a problem, I have a number to call, and they're going to take care of it. That's not going to be the scenario anymore when they start inviting the general public onto the property, especially now if they're deciding to close it down before they're going to start to build. Where does that leave us residents? And yeah, I may be the only one here, but when people start getting robbed, there's crimes, someone's hurt, then people will start paying attention. But I'm just going to keep ringing that bell as long as I have to, because this is bad for everybody in the city of Diamond Bar. There was also no kind of explanation about the cut-through traffic on Calborne, which was completely left out of the draft, environmental impact. And I thank very much Mr. Fox and his staff for bringing that to their attention, but we don't know if it's going to be fixed, because when we had that meeting with the county, they wouldn't tell us anything. And if the entire golf course is going to be closing, that's also different than they represented. At first, it was only a portion of land. Now the entire golf course is going? And how many houses are they going to build after that? And even though we know about one, we were told at the county meeting, "Oh, well, we can't predict the future." It's not about predicting the future. We've seen your emails. We know you know about this other bill that they want to do with 400 houses. This isn't imaginary. I mean, the impact that this is going to have is terrible, and I appreciate everything you guys have done so far, but we need to continue to get on these people, and they need to be responsible. They need to be responsible neighbors. If they can afford to build houses, they could afford to secure that property properly. They could afford security that's going to take care of the property and monitor their property. But we can't be assured that any of that's happening, and that's a real, real problem. Nobody should be left in this situation. Nobody. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gentry. And the next speaker card I have, it is Ms. Cynthia Yu from the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu, the community library manager of Diamond Bar Library. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our new children's librarian. Her name is Jennifer Gutierrez. She will be helping with our collection and planning and implementing programs for children. Here's Jennifer.
Good evening. A little shorter. So my name is Jennifer Gutierrez. I'm the new children's librarian at Diamond Bar Library. Just to give you a little background, I started with LA County Library in 2008 and quickly fell in love with library service. Over the past 15 years, I have joyously served communities from Baldwin Park to Claremont, participating in everything from reference service, all ages programming, community engagement, school partnerships and class visits, and collection development. You may have even seen me popping up at libraries, parks, schools, and community events to conduct outreach and provide STEAM programming as part of the library's Make Mo team, a specialized mobile makerspace unit. I'm thrilled and honored to join the Diamond Bar Library as the new children's librarian, and I look forward to introducing exciting, innovative programs and services to the community. Speaking of exciting programs, coming up on February 27th, we are starting a new six-week session of Smarty Pants Storytime for ages 2 to 5, which will be held every Tuesday at 10:15 a.m. And in March, I hope everyone will join us for two special children's programs for ages 5 to 12. On March 20th at 4:30 p.m., Make Mo will be presenting Light Up Origami. And on March 21st at 4:00 p.m., we will welcome a representative from the Friends of the Junior Art Center to learn about Moroccan designs and make our own Moroccan motif mirror. This program is generously sponsored by our Diamond Bar Friends of the Library and will offer the community an opportunity to learn about Islamic culture and Ramadan. Last but certainly not least, for the littlest ones, we'll be hosting baby storytime for ages 0 to 2 on March 8th at 10:15 a.m. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you all soon at the library.
Welcome, Ms. Gutierrez. Thank you, Ms. Yu. That's all the speaker cards I have, and City Clerk Santana, were there any public comment, emails received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was one email received from Adam Angulo, submitted for public comment tonight, and it was forwarded to the city council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for public viewing. If any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program now. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. Are there anyone else that would like to address the council, either be online or in person? Seeing none, we will close public comment.
Respond. Responding to the first speaker.
Regarding the first speaker's issue, we have a charity department here. Do they have any recommendation or suggestion for the issue they have raised because of the closing of the golf course? Also, there's a public work at the Diamond Bar Golf Course, so that golf course has been closed for a while. And what has been done for proper measure with the closing of that golf course to keep the safety and security of the surrounding neighborhood? Can the charity give us a little bit of talk?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking. So are you asking, what are we doing specifically as it comes to the safety of the residents in and around each golf course?
Yeah. Any recommendation, suggestion for the neighbors in that area so that they can keep themselves safe, improve their awareness of any activity, crime activity, so they can be safe in their neighborhoods? Any suggestion for them?
You want this, Captain?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the eastern part of the golf course is going to be closed. They just had a meeting, the Roland Heights Community Coordinating Council just had a meeting last week where the board of supervisors representatives were there, and the project managers were there to ask questions. I'm not sure if she attended that meeting.
I asked whether we did. Okay. Where every question we asked was near and connected. We got no answer whatsoever.
Okay.
The sheriffs couldn't even know the golf course is closed. We have not even told them.
Okay.
It is the entire golf course, it's not just a golf course.
So as far as the golf course goes...
Mr. Fox, can I? Is this on here said we're not supposed to have extended discussion? Does this extend this discussion?
Yeah, I think we're probably getting to that point at this junction. We have not been made aware or heard anything about the course closure. The city did provide written comments to the draft environmental impact report at the end of the calendar year. We have not received any responses from that. Certainly, if it's the pleasure of the council, we can try to look into it and coordinate with the sheriff's team, but at this point, we're kind of unaware of the schedule and what the potential impacts of that closure might be.
Right. And being mindful of the Brown Act violation, he would look into attorney. What is it that we can do at this point?
Yeah, at this point, if there's a need to have further discussion, we would have to agendize it for a future meeting.
But I will say that the Diamond Bar Walnut Sheriff Team does serve that area as well, so if there is a need for a call for service, they would be the ones that would receive the call and respond accordingly.
And just real quick, as far as safety goes, for those listening or going to watch this later, always be vigilant. The golf course is not watched over during the nighttime. In nighttime, it's unprotected area where criminals can walk onto the golf course, jump over a fence, and break into your yard. That also goes for anywhere in our cities. You've got to watch your communities, make sure that anything that you see that raises the hairs on the back of your neck, just call the sheriff's department so we can go out and investigate. That would be what I would tell you, is always remain vigilant. Cameras are a great idea, no matter where you live, at a golf course or not, and just pay attention to your neighborhood and what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. Mayor Protem? So once again, we will close public comment and move on to our next item, which is the schedule of future events and the consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and then proceed with the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The catalytic converter etching event scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled due to the rain. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday morning, February 24th, at Grid Coffee, located at the corner of Grand and Diamond Bar Boulevard, near Jack in the Box. The Planning Commission meeting next week on Tuesday, February 27th, starting at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And there will be a public safety seminar on Wednesday evening, starting at 6:00 p.m. at the Diamond Point Elementary School at the corner of Golden Springs and Sunset Crossing. And our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, March 5th, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the February 6th meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated January 31st through February 13th, second reading by title only, and adoption of ordinance 01-2024, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Diamond Bar amending Chapter 8.26 of the Diamond Bar City Code in its entirety to prohibit and regulate marijuana cannabis businesses and cultivation in compliance with state law as last amended by SB 1186. Approval and authorization for the city manager to sign and submit a letter of objection and application to purchase tax-defalted property. Approval of the notice of completion for the illuminated street name sign and traffic signal safety light replacement project. And adoption of Resolution 2024-04 approving the plans and specifications for the Area 3 residential street rehabilitation project, arterial street repaving projects, and median groundwater drainage projects, including a determination that this action is categorically exempt Class 1 from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And would any of my colleagues like to approve any items for discussion?
No, I'd like to make motion to approve, please.
Okay. A motion to approve from Councilmember Lowe.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Chow. And City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And on public hearings or non-public hearings, and we'll move on to item 7.1 for city council consideration. City Manager Fox, please provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will ask our finance director, Jason Jacobson, to make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am delighted to present to you tonight the mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2324. I have a short presentation for you this evening, and I will jump right in. Here on this slide is the general fund revenue summary. You start with the current budget on the left column, the year-to-date received next to that to the right, the proposed mid-year adjustments, the proposed revised budget, and the remaining available budget, and the remaining percentage. And so the way to interpret this slide here would be that anything more than 40% on the rightmost column is currently undercollected year-to-date through the end of January. And that's just typical for the general fund to have a majority of its revenue sources above that 40% mark at this time. So I will highlight to you the three mid-year adjustments we are requesting for the general fund. First and foremost is a $500,000 adjustment to sales tax revenue to reflect trends as of year-to-date for increased funding from county pool sources and business and industry category. The county pool reflects the online sales category. In addition to that is a $100,000 revenue increase for the Diamond Bar Center rentals due to rental activity, which is really remaining consistent with where it was at the prior fiscal year. However, when we were developing the current year's budget, we didn't yet know where last year ended, so we kind of had a different trend built into the budget. So this is to kind of just bring it up to where we ended last year, so we're expecting a very similar year as of right now. Lastly, we have a wonderful adjustment there for cost reimbursements to reflect a grant received by the community development department for the cost to present the housing element update. And that is funding that we've received, they applied for in 2020, and it has been received, and this adjustment reflects that. In sum, for the revenue related to the general fund, we have total adjustments at $759,340. Any questions before I move on? Okay, we can always come back. All right, jumping right into the expenditures for the general fund, a number of adjustments throughout most of the departments here tonight. I will, again, kind of orient you here. We have the current year budget on the left totaling $36.8 million. The expended year-to-date at $16.8, total proposed adjustments at $327,730. The revised, proposed revised budget at $37.1 million, and the remaining budget. And again, with respect to this, anything below 40% remaining is trending a little high, and we're not quite there, except maybe one or two items there, but nothing to worry about. As it trends now, we're looking at ending the year with a budgetary savings at the moment. So I will go into the various adjustments as detailed in the agenda report. I'll kind of run through them. Let me know if you have any questions. We have department heads here that can answer questions, and it looks like we have a question.
I have a question. Thank you. So here, collectively, the percent remaining is 55%. What can you tell us about what that means?
So it means we would expect through January to have about 40% remaining, usually, if everything is linear, right? But we don't spend money in a linear fashion. A lot of this has to do with CIP funding coming out of the general fund going to the CIP fund. And so if you see, like, for example, that bottom line is the second-largest line item in the general fund budget is the general fund transfer out category, which is a large sum there. Remaining budget is $4.6 million, 57% remaining there. What that means is that we don't spend that linearly. In other words, we don't spend 1/12 of that budget every month, right? So we spend, as we have expenditures in other funds, we will then transfer those out of the general fund, and we do that generally on a quarterly basis. So by the end of the year, I expect most of that will also still be remaining, just because it is largely in part due to CIP funding and just the nature of CIP projects. Any questions on any other of those items?
So we are pretty much at the middle of the budget year, right?
Yes, this is about 60%. This chart here reflects expenditures through 60% of the year through the end of January. And so currently, obviously, we're in February, but as of the date of this preparation of this slide, it was 60%. All right, so I will run through the list of adjustments on the expenditure side for the general fund. We have a $37,000 adjustment for special litigation fees for city prosecutor services, a $15,600 adjustment for economic development program activity related to publications and meetings and training, $25,000 adjustment for contracted IVHS services for animal control. We have an $8,000 adjustment for human resources related to healthcare and insurance premium costs, $1,500 for planning for on-call environmental services for EIR and traffic impact studies, $3130 for building and safety for additional rental storage capacity, a Parks and Rec reduction in the budget to reflect savings from various programs such as Winter Snowfest, Halloween Party, and Concerts in the Park, a $23,500 adjustment to replace stolen equipment.
Can you excuse me, Mr. Jacobson? Can you talk about that? How did we? Were we victims of crime? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I can let either Dave or Mr. Fox expand on that if you'd like.
You know, in summary, some of our vehicles were broken into behind City Hall, and tools were stolen out of the public works vehicles. So that's the extent to replace the tools that were lost.
Any update from our law enforcement team about recovery or investigation of this crime on the city?
I'm not aware of any arrests that have been made. Reports have been filed, but I'm not aware of any outcome.
Nor are you aware of any investigation taking place on this?
Maybe Captain Towsey, if he has any updates, but I do not believe they've been able to identify... to identify any viable leads.
My understanding is a report was taken, but there was no suspect description or video to lead us to a suspect. But I can follow up with our Detective Bureau supervisors and provide the council with an updated next council meeting to find out if we have any leads or if we've taken any investigation.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Moving on there, the Public Works Department is also requesting $5,000 for additional janitorial and cleaning supplies at the Diamond Bar Center due to increased usage, an additional $20,000 to replace swing gate at Diamond Bar Center, Grand Avenue entrance due to a vehicle collision, $10,000 for additional funding for on-call geotechnical services for the Diamond Bar Boulevard slope distress evaluation, $44,500 for increased civic center utility costs. Of that, $43,000 is for electric utility due to higher rates and consumption, and $1,500 is for water utility consumption. Public Works is also requesting $7,500 for increases to electric utility costs at parks and facilities, $85,000 for maintenance to grounds and buildings, $25,000 of which is for new woodchips at city parks such as Pantera and Diamond Bar Canyon, $60,000 is for playground equipment repairs and new woodchips at Sycamore Canyon Park. Lastly, $50,000 is requested for contracted traffic signal maintenance due to increased number of traffic accidents. This brings the total general fund expenditure request to $327,730.
Can I ask you a question about item number, it's Public Works for $20,000 replacement of the swing gate due to vehicle collision? Any chance of recovery on that from the driver, or are we the driver?
I would have to defer to Director of Public Works.
Mr. Mayor remembers the City Council. What I recall was a private party or private vehicle, and I believe the police report was foul, but I don't have an update. Typically, you know, when public properties sustain these damages, we do go through the formal reporting and work closely with not only the shares department, but with our risk manager in coordination with JPIA. But the ultimate endgame order is to recoup the cost from the insurance companies.
Right, right, right. The driver would presumably have some insurance that we do not have to expend this amount.
Right, this happened a while back, so I don't have the most recent update in terms of whether or not the city has been successful in recovering the cost from the insurance company.
Okay.
All right, if I could return to the presentation. There we go, thank you. All right, along with the departmental requests, we have, in addition, we have various reclassifications proposed as part of the mid-year adjustment. As you know, as part of our ongoing effort to remain the employer of choice in the region and invest adequate resources in retaining human capital, structural needs of various departments have been identified and are identified on an ongoing basis. Included in this recommendation is a request to reclass two accounting technicians in the Finance Department, two senior accounting technician, four recreation specialists in the Parks and Rec Department, two rec coordinator, two maintenance workers in the Public Works Department, two senior maintenance worker, and one Public Works Inspector, two senior Public Works Inspector. These changes will help departments address necessary retention and succession planning efforts in an effort to provide the most positive and effective customer service experience possible for the residents. The total fiscal year 2324 cost to implement these nine reclassifications is approximately $15,000 for the general fund and $3,000 for various special funds. But due to current salary savings throughout all the departments, fiscal year 2324 budget, the adopted budget is currently adequate to fund the cost of implementing these reclassifications. The proposed changes to the 2324 compensation plan are included in detail in the attached resolution and Exhibit A for the resolution. And I'll jump into next slide, which sort of summarizes everything. I've already gone through detail on the top there of the general fund, the resources and appropriations. There you see we have an addition in fund balance as a result, a budgetary fund balance of $431,610 added to the reserves. I will now discuss briefly the other governmental funds and the internal service funds as they are detailed in the agenda report. General Plan Revision Fund is managed mainly through the Community Development Department, and they're requesting a $7,500 increase for the Town Center specific plan, traffic impact analysis. The Technology Reserve Fund, we're proposing to increase the budget there by $36,000 to transfer out to the Equipment Maintenance and Replacement Fund to fund replacement equipment purchased out of that fund. Measure W, we're proposing an increase of $101,000, $86,000 of which is for the annual watershed management plan from fiscal year 2223. We received delayed invoice, $15,000 for the Diamond Canyon Park catch basin cleanup. We're requesting $8,000 in additional funding from Prop A for additional shuttle services related to the city birthday party. Transportation Development Act Fund 209, we're proposing an increase of $40,000 for the Grand and Golden Springs Drive Intersection Enhancement Project, which will be offset by Measure M funding, a reduction there of $40,000 to the same project, just shifting the funding sources as we have expiring funds in the TDA fund. That brings us to our internal service departments there. On the bottom, we have the Vehicle Maintenance and Replacement Fund. We're requesting an increase of $11,000 for vehicle maintenance costs. The Equipment Maintenance and Replacement Fund 503, we're proposing a revenue increase of $36,000, which is the transfer in portion from the Technology Reserve Fund that we previously saw the transfer out budget there. In addition to this, we have the expense increase totaling $36,000 to replace various end-of-life equipment, $6,000 for security cameras at Sycamore Canyon Park, and $30,000 for the Wi-Fi equipment at the Diamond Bar Center. Lastly, we have the Building Maintenance and Facility Fund. We're requesting there an expense increase of $65,000 for the City Hall rooftop boiler, which is equipment original to the building. All right, as you can see here, in sum, we have total proposed revenue increases of $795,340 appropriation or expense increases of $592,230. And in all cases, except for the general fund, it's a proposed use of fund balance, and also except for the Equipment Maintenance and Replacement Fund, which is a net zero hit to the fund balance as we're transferring those funds in from the Technology Reserve Fund. All right, that brings us to the recap for the general fund. I'm sorry, a little bit small print there, there's a lot on that slide, but I do want to just kind of walk you through where we are to recap. I think we last spoke about our finances specifically in the general fund just last month, so you're probably, it's off top of mind. So I do want to just rekind of set the conversation so we can see where we're at here with the unassigned fund balance in the general fund as we move forward and soon enough into the next budget adoption process for the 2425 budget. We started the fiscal year here with adopted resources of $30.6 million and a adopted uses in the general fund of $31.9 million, which led us to adopt a balance, a use of fund balance for one-time projects totaling $1.3 million, most of which were CIP projects, leaving the unassigned fund balance at $23.1 million. In addition to that, we have a $7.9 million or $8 million emergency contingency reserve as required by our fund balance reserve policy. So total fund balance at the beginning of the year was $31.04 million. Throughout the year, council has approved various adjustments, largely for one-time adjustments for CIP projects, and we also, per our funding policy, we took the last year's surplus of about $3 million in surplus in the general fund, ending June 30th, 2023. We had a $3 million surplus, 80% of that was transferred out to the Park and Development Fund and the Building and Facility Fund. So that is within that $3.37 million number you see there. In addition, we have $1.47 million in carryover items from the previous year. That is, only $200,000 of that is for contracted services. The remainder of that, $1.2 million, is for CIP projects, so funded by the general fund. That brings us to the second to last column, our total resources and appropriations net out to an addition in fund balance to the general fund of $431,610. Totalling it all up on the right side there, we have a total revised use of fund balance of $5.7 million, leaving us with $18.6 million in unassigned fund balance, estimated ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2024. And the remaining portion of that emergency contingency reserve balance does not change, it remains stable, so that's still $8 million. It's bringing us to a total fund balance in the general fund of $26.6 million. Any questions? Lastly, I would just like to bring this to the staff recommendation, which is to adopt Resolution 2024-05 amending the fiscal year 2324 municipal budget, revenue estimates, and appropriations. In addition, adopt Resolution 2024-06 amending the city's fiscal year 2324 compensation plan. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. We will now open this to a public comment. Are there any members of the public in-person audience who would like to make a comment on this item? And City Clerk Santana, are there any members of the public online?
Yes, there are, and I'd like to say there were no emails submitted for this item. And if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to comment on item 7.1, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program now. There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Also, once again, if we, anyone who would like to make a public comment, and seeing none, we will close public comment and go for colleagues with any, like colleagues with any discussion or questions. Okay, Councilmember Chow.
It's more of a comment. I actually read this, so glad you're doing your work. So thanks for preparing this. I think it's a good mid-year budget. I think that's a process that Councilmember Lo started a couple years ago, asking for a mid-year budget review. So I think this is critical for us to keep tab on how we're doing as a city, but it looks great. Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Thank you, Councilmember Lo for starting this. And, okay, so would any colleague like to make a motion on this item?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Chow.
I'll second.
And second by Councilmember Lo. And City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Mayor, if I may clarify, that's for items A and B.
Correct, sorry. Yes, I move to approve, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-05 amending the fiscal year 202324 municipal budget, revenue estimate, and appropriation, and to adopt Resolution Number 2024-06 amending the city's fiscal year 202324 compensation plan. That's the motion.
Okay.
And that would be my second as to that.
Second by Councilmember Lo. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Motion passed, thank you. It will now move on to item 7.2. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Mayor Lu and members of the City Council, the mayor proposed that the City Council consider community recognition at council meetings. It was the consensus of the council to bring something back at your meeting for discussion, which you now have. I also included a copy of the City Council's current recognition policy, which provides some of the criteria which is currently in place for recognition. And I turn it over to Mayor Lu for any additional comments or discussion, and happy to provide any or respond to any direction that you feel appropriate. Thank you.
So on this item, we have so many amazing organizations, individuals, residents in Diamond Bar. I thought we can recognize them a little bit more for the good deeds they're doing, somebody unsung heroes that are in our community that do things out of the kindness of the heart, or for the others making an impact, both to our city and others' lives, or the meaningful recognitions that we have. And that's something that we, perhaps, that we can do to bring, recognize them more on the City Council meeting. That's the idea behind there. And are there any questions or discussion items from our colleagues? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Well, now, our policy is that the recommendation of the certificate or recognition only to go through mayor for mayor approval. I just wonder, there are many, many recommendations and going to your desk, going to you for approval. How would you, how do you handle the case? Do you, do you just read one by one? What's your, how do you do it?
Well, my short two-month experience, we have an amazing staff that prepare these reports and summaries, and we can look at them according to our guidelines to the nexus to our Diamond Bar. And most of the requests that have been coming in is more than well-deserved. So that's what we, it's all because of our staff.
You got a staff to help you to review all the recommendations?
Absolutely. So we have a recognition request on our website that can be easily found. Individuals or a council member, anyone that in a public can make a request, and that will go into our staff, and our staff will send us the report, and at this point, it goes to the mayor, and the mayor reviews, and at that point, we can make a decision if something is worth merit or recognizing. And of course, we're welcome and encourage our member of the public to recognize something that you see, or anyone that, individual worth recognizing that has the nexus to Diamond Bar.
We do have like an online application, and I think one time that the people request me to help them to get the recognition and certification, so that they were directly to the online application. And my feedback is that the people complain that the online application is really, very difficult to complete. And I myself actually get online to see what the application was, and I think it's pretty hard to complete without knowing too much of the information. So I wonder if there's any chance to improve so that the group and the people with intent to get a recognition will have an easier time to get our city's recognition.
So something like that. I personally have made many requests on a city website, and I feel that the information that is required, that's on the request submission, that has been essential useful information that is required. Personally, it's been pretty straightforward for me, and then one of the big part of it, when it gets a request, it's made, it goes straight into our system, our staff, and also the microfiche. And certainly, we can look in, always looking in the ways of improving. And that, Councilmember Tai?
So I thought we were going to be talking about something different, not requests that were made through the system, the mayor. I thought we were talking about identifying somebody that we, like I told you, like I mentioned at the last meeting, somebody doing something well, somebody doing something decent for Diamond Bar. But we're really talking about the process, right? Mr. Fox?
It seems like there are two parts. Because we have the opportunity to look at the process as well, but definitely what you said is absolutely correct.
Okay, so that's what I guess I want to get off on that avenue, is we at one time had guidelines for who would be eligible for recognition, for, you know, proclamation, whatever it might be. And it seems to me that we've gone way off course with that. And are we going to have that discussion tonight, or are we going to do that another night?
It's totally up to the council. I think that it may be a little bit two-part, but the recognition policy that the council has adopted, you know, is what, you know, staff uses to evaluate the requests that has adopted, you know, is what, you know, staff uses to evaluate the requests that come in. You know, we have set up an online process to help facilitate that. If there are things that we can do to the form, we can certainly look at making it easier. The individuals can always, you know, contact, you know, the department directly to, for assistance. I think what the main point for tonight, and I could be wrong, you know, Mayor Liu, correct me if I'm wrong, was trying to encourage, you know, more certificates to be recognized here at council meetings. The vast majority of the certificates that are issued are for events that are outside of a council meeting, whether it's a ribbon cutting, or a grand opening, or a meeting that the council members attend at various functions. So I think it's the idea of Mayor Liu to, for the council maybe to identify, or propose, or nominate individuals that do good deeds to be recognized at council meetings. And it would be, I think, in what I mentioned in the staff report, it would be within the context of the council's current policy for recognition. So there would need to be a strong connection to the city of Diamond Bar, which sounds like that that would be the case.
Sure, but we've gotten away from that. I mean, there's, I can't think of a nexus that we would be sending proclamations to the Chinese regional chamber of commerce in Los Angeles. It makes as much sense to me as if we were to put together a proclamation for the regional chamber of commerce in Encino. There's no nexus. And I thought that was the purpose of the guidelines at the time. So are, will we still follow those, or will we just do away with those?
If I could add to that, I think my understanding was that, you know, there are two parts to the discussion here today. One was to take a second look at the recognition policy, and I think, having read through that, there are different criteria for either a certificate, a plaque, a proclamation, city tile, and a key to the city. So there are different levels of recognition that we currently recognize, and I guess give other certificates. I think you were talking about the certificates. So I think from a policy standpoint, I, for Council, Mayor Pro Tem Tang, so the recognition policy, my recollection was reviewed and updated back in 2019, in response to, you know, certain council members at the time that felt that a more defined policy was needed. And I think for the most part, we do stick with the policy for the most part. Now, having served as mayor last year, and thank staff for pulling the stats from the past two years, I didn't realize we passed, gave out that many certificates last year compared to the year before. I don't know if that's a general trend, I don't know, but I'm glad to have that information available before the meeting. So I, from the policy standpoint, I think the current policy is good, and I think for the most part, we do stick with the policy as far as giving certificates, proclamation. If you look at the stats from past two years, the number of proclamations, those were for Black History Month, or Asian American Heritage Month, or water awareness, so those things are different from the certificate, right? I believe we issue about 300 certificates and about 30 proclamations, if I remember the numbers right. So, so I think, so that's one thing, that was one part of my comments, that I believe the recognition policy is good, and I didn't see a need to revamp it, I think that's a good policy. The second part is the practical side of it. So having served as mayor and having approved that many certificate requests last year, I, you know, I'll be honest, a lot of certificate that came from individual council members, I don't know what the nexus was. And, but I have to believe that if it's, if that request is coming from a council member, there is nexus, at least in their mind, whether they're attending an event, they're recognizing an individual. I think that nexus, if it's coming from a specific council member, that was reason enough for me to approve that request, because I believe they have the reasons for requesting that, and you, you, we're all duly elected council members representing our own district. If a person in my district wants a certificate, a certificate for whatever reason, and it comes to us, and I deem that appropriate, and I deem that something that we should accommodate, then I would like to put in a request. Maybe we can make a distinction with different types of certificate. If it's a five-signature certificate, that's official, that's from the city. I think those things should continue to come from the mayor, whoever that is at the time. But I think maybe provide another option, because last year, I wish I had that option as mayor last year, is that for individual council members to request a certificate with their signatures, based on their assessment of that request. In other words, not every certificate, I believe, needs a five signature on it. If the person requesting, or the organization requesting a five-signature certificate, that obviously will go through the mayor. I think the mayor will have to finally say in that. So that's the point I'm trying to make. I think we can kind of expand that a little bit, so that individual council members, if they deem that necessary and appropriate, they should be able to request a certificate on their own for their own, for whatever reasons they think is necessary. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I agree with you. Everybody here knows how I feel about districts, and that's the problem, is when you're going to give somebody recognition because they reached out in your district, if somebody from your district were to, for whatever reason you run into them, it could be a public meeting, whatever it might be, if they ask me, I'm going to run it by the mayor. And I think every certificate of recognition coming from the city of Diamond Bar should be five signatures. I never thought of it as five signatures or one signature, but it should be from the council, it should be from the city council of Diamond Bar, not an individual. If you want to send them a note with your name on it, then do that. But I think this should be, and this gets back to our point, Mr. Fox, is we had these things in place, they were designed to relieve the burden on staff of producing so many proclamations that went where? We don't know. I mean, again, to me, and seeing one that was recently for the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles, somebody's got to make that make sense to me. And it doesn't matter to me, if I'm the one going to that meeting and going to be part of their program, I'm not going to request a proclamation. It's not, you know, we, we don't send things to Los Angeles, and Los Angeles doesn't send things to us, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. Mr. Fox, it seems like we, we have council members that express opinions on something that's other than this. Should we put in a study session to discuss a little bit further on the topics that raised by Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Tai? Because this item was in show intention, just how do we recognize more amazing individuals, and the kindness in our, in our community, and the impact that it would be making, that at city council meetings?
And let me just refresh, I agree wholeheartedly with what your thought was at our last meeting. I love that idea. We, what we, what I said was, what we want to do is catch people doing something good.
Absolutely.
So, well, what I would suggest is finish the discussion on the item that's before you tonight, and if the staff report kind of recommendation or discussion in there is appropriate, or if you want to add anything to it, then, secondly, if there is interest in further discussions about individual certificates, which would require a council policy amendment, whether it's, whether the majority of the council wants to have a study session to discuss that or not.
Okay.
Yeah, this is kind of going in a different direction than what I thought we were going to do, but I don't know if we need a study session specifically for amending the policy to allow individual council members to request a certificate. I think, I mean, I don't want to like sit on it for two weeks either, I mean, if we can just kind of get a consensus, if people don't think that's a good idea, I'll just drop it, but if people think it's a good idea, we'll move forward.
Like in forward, in having a further discussion, or having?
No, just maybe take, have a motion, take a vote, see if there's a second, when we can take a vote, see, we want to amend a policy to allow individual council members to request a certificate from their own office, essentially. If there's no consensus, then we don't need to even talk about it at the study session. We can focus on who should bring in and stuff like that.
I think the reason it's a good idea to have a study session is so that we're all on the same page.
Again, if there's a majority of the council wants to go one way or the other, we'd be happy to facilitate that.
What is the? Okay. So, we, are we asking, should we have a study session on the proposed policy change?
Let me, you know, suggest again that you finish the discussion about your particular item, and is the ability for each of the council members to work within the existing policy to recognize those individuals appropriate, to recognize them at city council meetings?
Right. So it, in that, thank you, Councilmember Tai, and Councilmember Chow, in terms of recognizing good deeds, individual organizations at city council meetings, and my intention, idea was how do we do, bring more, first of all, and how do we do it in an equitable way? So can we?
I think, Mayor Liu, that your idea is a really, it's a noble one, and I don't, I don't think that anybody disagrees with that. And, and one of the nice things about the idea of bringing it here at city council is that it feels like everybody's on notice, everybody knows that there's a certificate coming, nobody's surprised, like who, who's this person, why did they get it, how come this person? It just kind of takes some of that away. So I think that that aspect of it is, is very positive. And I think our policy at this point can accommodate what you want to do, because it, we do have an online process, which really makes the job easier for our staff. And let me just kind of segue sideways, just mention, just listening to all the proclamations that are given and read, I want to compliment our staff for just having beautiful language and just being very thoughtful with our certificates. So thank you very much for your work in that regard. But I think that if, if the, the idea is that for council members to submit their own requests and get through our system, I've used the online request, and it's a little challenging at the beginning, Council, Mayor Pro Tem, but you know, you kind of get used to it after one or two, because you know what you need, what you don't need, and so you can kind of make it more concise. And it truly helps our staff, so they know what it is that you want, or what it is that that person did that merits the certificate. So it just kind of helps everybody. If you can tell the staff why they deserve it, then they can put it on the, in writing, why they deserve it. So it really, there's, there's no second guessing or trying to read our minds, so it's just helpful, it's a little bit of work. So we can still, I think, accomplish what you want to do with the process that we have. And I don't think that, from what I hear, nobody is saying that the policy that we have is bad. It maybe, it needs a little tweaking, and I don't even know if we're, if even is anyone is really pushing for tweaking. I think that it works. And I think that it, that Councilmember Chow makes a good point, is that we are all a member of this body, and part of that is making decisions and reaching out, and, and we use our wisdom and discretion in picking out somebody to recognize. I mean, granted, having been mayor myself, sometimes it's pretty hard to tell somebody no, when they did something they feel is very deserving, but, but it's just hard to say no, and it's easier to say sure. And that's where being the wisdom and discretion comes in, that we exercise that.
Okay. Mr. Fox, does that?
Does that help you?
Direction, or?
Well, it sounds like there is consensus to work within the existing policy, and to have, to identify those certificates that would be presented at council meetings. You know, so if the council members are nominating folks, or people are nominating, if we can identify them for future council meetings, we'd be happy to put them on the agenda. The next question is a little bit more involved, and whether that the council wants to deviate from the current practice of having a city certificate to now individual council member certificates. That would be different than the policy, and I think you would probably want to have some discussion if there's a majority of consensus to move forward. I'm not sure there's consensus to move that forward, but happy to respond accordingly.
I want to make a just comment, I don't want to make it too long, but just want to bring out several facts. One is the, most of the, well, even we are in, from a small city, but from big, big area, like LA County, state assembly, state senator, they all come in with an individual certificate. They don't come in with the certificate with, from the whole assembly, from the whole senate. Even congresswoman, congressmen come here to bring their personal recognition, personal certificate, they don't bring the, they usually don't bring the certificate for the whole congress. So I think, at least for those positions, they have, they have their own certificate. So I think, besides the difference of the size, but we are all the same, we are all elected by the people that we have our district to represent. So I think we should probably look at them to see what they are doing, they are bringing their personal certificate. That's my, that's my comment. I want people to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Fox, I just wanted to, since I brought this up, I want to make it clear, is, you know, a big part of our city, with our colleagues here, are being council members, and a part of the community is community outreach and engagement. I am not saying that we bring every, convert all the certificate presentation to be here in city council, council. We encourage, we want to find ways to encourage and have more of that. But there are also city events that are out there, that individual during a event, that when a presentation of certificate is deemed more appropriate. So is that, I just wanted to share that, that?
Well, and again, the current process is a council member may coordinate with the mayor to approve such a request. We have a process for that, and that's what we've been trying to follow. And then, all five council members' signatures show up on that certificate as one city, and that's what we're trying to do as far as the recognition. It's not an individual, no, no one council member has any more authority than the majority of the council members. You know, so the mayor does have the ability to approve each of those certificates, proclamations, or whatever they are, that each council member may request approval. And under the policy, if there's a connection to Diamond Bar, and the mayor approves it, we would, you know, prepare that certificate. So if there is interest in individual certificates, that's a, in my humble opinion, a very large departure from working as a city council. You know, so we may want to think about that a little bit, but I'll leave it to you if you want to schedule something for a future study session, or leave it the way it is.
Okay.
If I may add to that, before possibly making motion, I don't know, but I think, one, this, all due respect, it's a policy decision based, you know, up to the council to see how we want to recognize people, how we want to issue certificates. It's a policy decision that can, and sometimes are updated. Secondly, I think we're all duly elected, I think that we each should have the discretion issuing a certificate for people who we deem necessary, and whether or not there's a clear nexus to Diamond Bar, I think that's up to us individually, because we represent a city, or our own district, and I think that's something that individually we can decide. I'm not saying that now everyone's going to go off and apply for individual certificate, I'm saying that should be an option, there will be times, and I've seen occasion where that's appropriate, where certificate comes from the individual council members. One, either the other council member One, either the other council members, for one reason or another, don't want to see their name on the certificate, or they don't think it's appropriate for them, their name to be on the certificate. So I'm saying have another option in addition to what we already have. There's no reason to revamp the recognition policy, I think it's good the way it is. But I think it's create another option for those occasions, because I know I've seen those where it might be more appropriate for individual council members to have their own name on the certificate only. Create that as an option, so.
Okay. For seven point two, we're discussing about how we can equitably bring more recognition in City Council meetings. And then, we looked at the policy and reviewed the policy. And we have a suggestion from Councilmember Chow, that perhaps maybe we can look into an addition to the policy that we have. Mr. Fox, is that something that, what do you need from us?
I would need a majority consensus to work on that.
Do a study session?
No, I think it's a vote.
Staff would need the majority of the council to say, yes, we would like to explore that option. And then we can figure out if it needs to be a study session, or what the format and the amendments to the policy would be.
Okay.
But if the council wants to start with a study session, we can start there. If it's the majority of consensus.
I'll move, excuse me. I'll make a motion to have a study session for the additional policy to amend for our existing policy. To consider the individual council's request of the certificate.
Do we, like, need a second?
I already seconded.
Do we have a motion? So this is something different from what we have here, seven point two. So this is to look into policy change or modification to have...
To allow for individual council members to issue certificates or other forms of recognition.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Ten, and Councilmember Tai, second, correct?
For the study session.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait, wait, sorry, sorry. Can you clarify the motion? I think there's some departure there. Can you clarify the motion?
I make a motion to have our, I think my motion is to let our staff to study.
Look into...
Look into the option, and to have an individual council, to have an option to amend the policy, to let the individual council to issue the certificate first. And then, if needed, we can have, if staff think this is feasible, then we have a study session to discuss that.
Well, it really is the council's policy, so it would either be appropriate to have a study session, or put, place it on this agenda to have that deliberated in open session.
Okay, then I'll adjust my move to have a study session for that.
That was the motion.
Yeah, so he, Mayor Pro Tem clarified it. So the motion, it is to have a study session on modification, and Councilmember Tai, you still...
Oh yeah, let's take the vote before we change our minds again.
Okay. And you okay? Any other discussions that's important to you, Ms. Councilmember Chow?
I'm sorry, I don't, maybe it's getting late, I don't know. It's to have a study session to consider, to explore the option of, for individual council members to request their own certificate.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion, and that's a second, still a second, Councilmember Tai? Okay, all right.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and City Clerk Santana, can we call for a vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Liu?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ten?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a majority? And Mr. Fox, that, that direction?
That'll be helpful, thank you.
Thank you so much. And do we still call for a vote on, or do we have enough discussion on that? Okay. And so that's seven point two. Thank you so much, everyone, for the discussion, insightful comments. And we'll move on to Council Subcommittee Report. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, staff and my colleagues, for robust discussion and council meeting tonight, and thank you for the mid-year budget review, that's extremely helpful. There were not a lot of meetings, I think people were just getting back into swinging things following Lunar New Year, but there, I think there are a few things happening this weekend, so, that'll say good night, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Liu?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, thanks for a great job again this month, and thank you for a great year, mid-year review, really appreciate the information and the diligence in keeping us on track. And of course, good news with extra money, we always like that. Before, by the time we get together next, which would be March 5th, this is election season, so just want to encourage everyone to look at your ballots and be part of our democratic system and vote. Mayor Pro Tem, myself, and Councilmember Tai attended the girls' softball opening day last Saturday, it was really a lot of fun. The girls were just great, and congratulations to our very own Amy for her daughter being in little, in girls' softball. She's the member of the Pink Stars, so it was just, it was a, I guess the only word I can say that was, is super cute. So congratulations to the girls, and wishing them a very good season. I also attended the Miss Diamond Bar Fashion Show along with Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem, did you buy any dresses from that event? Maybe he didn't, but my husband sure did. And again, the Miss Diamond Bar is a service organization, and they were raising money to send the young ladies to college, so that's also a worthwhile cause. And of course, the Lunar New Year keeps on giving, so if you haven't celebrated enough, there's another one to go. So with that, I will say good night, and be safe out there in the rain. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu, and Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. It was exciting to be with the Diamond Girls Softball Group on an incredibly cold morning that was foggy than it was sunny, but they were all very excited to do their skits, and Pink Stars won the banner. We finally got to a three-zero agreement on that, so very, very exciting that they are going again this year. Mr. Fox, I would like to, you mentioned something about getting in touch with LA County. I don't really think they do a very good job of taking care of the cities that are impacted by their decisions. So to Ms. Gentry's point, if we could get information about the closure, which sounds like it's a week from Friday, so if we could get that information and see what they have in store for safety. I mean, I thought Mayor Pro Tem had a great point, that for how long has the golf course that we know as the Diamond Bar Golf Course been under lock and key? And I would say that if this property is going to be developed, there's somebody there that's going to develop it. And it's obviously not the LA County, but they should have some input on this to make sure that homes are taken care of, and public safety is still job one. So if you would take care of that for us, I would certainly appreciate it. And I'll say good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. Mayor Pro Tem Ten?
I have no comment tonight. Good night.
Thank you. Thanks, staff, for the presentation, and everyone being here in this meeting. To follow up on what Councilmember Tai said, and to Ms. Gentry's concerns, and a lot with the areas that is bordering the golf course. And I am wondering if something that we can do, other than, on top of what Councilmember Tai suggested, is something that we can have our public safety, the service department, to have a talk, or something that, how, what is it that we can do to help our residents, some of the things that they can do to keep ourselves safe and be mindful? It's something as such, and it would be an outreach and help our residents. And, Mr. Fox, that's that...
We'll be happy to see what we can find out.
Okay. Also find out, but can we have a meeting with Deputy Schaller, or with our captains, that we can meet our residents, and what is it that they, because one part of it, it's a county, right? We can't control what the county does. But what we can do is, we can do our diligence, and to be, some of the things that we can do to prevent, keep ourselves safe.
We can certainly, we have information on hardening your house, and try to be less of a victim. I can check to see if we have a neighborhood watch program in those neighborhoods, that they're, you know, they can have a conversation, you know, kind of in that forum, if there are.
Okay, yeah, forum is a good way. Thank you so much. And this Sunday, I, this past Sunday, I attended the groundbreaking at the Efree Church of Diamond Bar, and the groundbreaking on the new children's center, and congratulate Efree on that. And I wanted to thank all the neighbors, keeping each other safe, and with the rain that we have, and looking out for each other. With that, I will say good night. Thank you so much. We will call during this meeting, today, this evening's meeting, at 8:13. Thank you so much.